Approval of minutes from July.
I read the minutes and I didn't have any corrections.
I had just a couple of things.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Oh, you're six on number nine. Um, the village was at thirty percent non-residential and fifty percent residential. And it's just reversed there.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, what am I doing? Is that right? Yeah, number six.
So it should be thirty percent residential in that first sentence?
Um, that's commercial. Yeah, it should be fifty percent commercial, thirty percent residential.
Okay, so just flip.
Yeah, just flip them.
Okay.
And it was changed to seventy-five percent so far for the public hearing in September. Um, Ryan is spelled wrong on number seven. In that first sentence.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Number ten, roman numeral ten. Number two, A. Regarding of budding roads, neighborhood development. Oh, yes, regarding of budding roads. It's not just a budding roads, but it could also be like parallel roads in the town, the neighborhood development areas. It doesn't have to abut Main Street. It can be parallel. And that's all I had.
I noticed that I accidentally put underboard absent Ted Silvestri.
Oh, I didn't even get that. Okay.
So I'll fix that.
I didn't say this, but I wish I had, because I had mentioned in these, at that time, that Ryan was at the trustees meeting, but Jeannie was also there. And I didn't mention that, so I guess I can't, I can't add that. But she was also there. I just want to recognize that she also came. Okay. I'll create a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections. Any discussion? All those with favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, moving on. Rules or procedure? Can't proceed, two people are missing. Okay, trustees. Bylaws. No, I'm at the right engine, but here we go. Section two twenty of our town zoning interior alterations. This was something Ryan asked us to consider because we changed it in the village zoning. We added this paragraph at the end. That Chris Callahan gave us the legalese for. And so far, the trustees are also on board with it. So he was saying we need to do the exact same thing in town zoning, which is section two twenty, they're both the same sections. So I took a look at that in town zoning and it's identical to the village zoning until we changed it. I'm sure when we consolidate, that stuff's all gonna, like, there's gonna be one document for that. But, so what I would suggest, I don't have a Word copy of that. I only have the PDF that's on the website. But I'd have to get a Word copy from Jason. They hold all the master copies at Regional. But if it's okay with everybody, I would just, the only thing that changed, I sent that to you guys through an email. The only thing that changed was the first paragraph, when we redid it in the village. And the last paragraph, and we added that thing at the end. So that's the only thing that really changed. And so if it's okay with the board, I would just make those same changes that we made to the village zoning. And then that would also be in town zoning. How do people feel about that? Makes sense. Yeah, is that okay? Because obviously, we updated the village zoning and the town zoning is like two thousand fifteen, I think. Because there, it's on the website, it looks like it's earlier because it says two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, but that was just when we added COVID stuff, like you can eat outside and that kind of stuff. So I can bring that up if you want to see it. But otherwise, I'll just make those changes and bring it to the next meeting. And we can take a look at it and approve it or not. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so I'll do that. Okay, so the trustees' public hearing, next agenda item, item eight, is on September third. If anybody wants to come, if they want to come, it's gonna, I think I shared with you last time, Chris Callahan, who's our zoning lawyer, said we had to have another public hearing because of the changes that the trustees made in the last couple of months to the changes that we had made, that they were pretty, you know, not even close to what we had suggested. So we have to have another public hearing, and that's scheduled for September third. If people can let me know if they can come or not, I'll warrant it doubly for us. But I don't think I really have to, though, because we're not gonna be making any motions or decisions. It's all up to them now, the trustees, what they want to do with it. Okay, and number nine, regional plannings, housing study, and neighborhood development areas. We have Jason here, yay, Jason. Jason secured a grant for us to get started with the neighborhood development areas. And I just brought, I put regional planning, housing study there because I was hoping that we could talk about that and get a joint meeting going with the trustees and the select board, but they, they didn't discuss that, which I was hoping they would last week. It wasn't brought up. But Brendan disturbed me, he will bring it up at their next meeting. Wanted to schedule that. Housing study, Regional did a housing study, and Allison and Jason want to meet with all three boards and tell them what they found out about Ludlow. Because most, a lot of it was about Ludlow and pertained to Ludlow. And Jason, do you want to take it away with neighborhood development areas? He secured a grant for us to work on this with him.
Sure, yeah. So we, Regional Commission put in an application with the state for a small amount of money to help with a neighborhood development area application for Ludlow and Springfield, and we were accepted, or we were awarded, I should say. So we got, we got this money, now we can start working with you. Generally speaking, we're supposed to help with an application. The first step is really just doing a review to see if you're ready, is the way they're terming it, municipal readiness. I've not done that, we've done a preliminary review, but I want to dig a little deeper. Essentially, we're gonna go through the details of what the eligibility is for the designation and see how your town plan and your zoning and all that falls into place. Or if not, you know, we'll identify some potential changes that might be needed. And then we can kind of talk with you a little bit more in detail about what we find and figure out how to proceed. In an ideal world, maybe you're eligible and we can just pull together an application together. If, if we do need to make some changes, we, this particular grant won't pay for it, but there may be some other ways to pay for it. So I think, you know, I'm gonna start with that review and want to come back to it fairly soon and let you know what we find out. But, you know, I think maybe I should back up a little bit, you know? If everyone is not familiar, so what is neighborhood development area? What does that all mean? So the state of Vermont has some designation programs. And there's the downtown and the village center designations. Ludlow Village Center is designated as such. And there are a few others, there's new town centers. And fairly new is this neighborhood development area piece. The village center designation is basically the core area of the village. And essentially, you know, gives the town sort of bonus points for certain grant applications. And maybe more importantly, you know, a few other tools, such as the tax credits. So property owners in that area can get some tax credits, and it would help to pay for some improvements to buildings. This neighborhood development area designation would, it's geared towards housing. And so essentially, it does some of those similar things, you know, in terms of grant, sort of bonus points for grants, but it makes housing developers of certain types able to access affordable housing funding. So that windowman wins your housing trust, tell me that's really important for them. So that's, that would be good. And you get, there's, there's some regulatory relief, so, not to get too in the weeds, but so if you get this neighborhood designation, people basically couldn't, they have a harder time appealing a decision based on the character of the area standard that's in your zoning, which is intended to help housing out. And there's also some MAC two fifty relaxations. Certain qualified mixed income housing projects are exempt from MAC two fifty. So, anyway, putting it short, that's, those are the reasons why maybe you want to consider doing this. And I'll leave it there. Are there any questions on that?
I just want to mention, I just want to mention that Logan is the one who said we should really take advantage of this because other towns haven't, and that there's money there, and, you know, why not take advantage of it?
Yeah, you know, there's, there's not many towns, I don't know, maybe, maybe fifteen or so towns that have this designation right now. And I think it's really important. And so I think, you know, we're, this grant that we have is really just to look into it. Make sure we know what you have in place, or maybe what you don't have in place, what you might need to change in order to be eligible. And then assuming Ludlow wants to proceed, and we get all those requirements in place, we'll prepare that application. So you can hopefully get those benefits.
I know on the website it said that the select board and the trustees had to approve it, well, the boards had to approve it. But I think you said Jason, spoiler alert, it's going to, oh, no, that's about the housing study that is going to tell us to develop where there's water and sewer. So that would mostly be village and not town select board. Until we consolidate, which is a couple years down.
That's true, and, you know, ultimately, yeah, we do, we would need the trustees and/or select board, depending how that unfolds, on board with this, to apply. But I think, you know, a logical next step is also, so we're gonna do that review, but we're all gonna, we're also gonna start looking at the map. And so basically, we, we draw a quarter mile boundary around the village center area. And then we start to look at, you know, where are their sidewalks? Where's their water and sewer? Where's existing housing? Where's there, you know, enough room to have new housing and whatever? And we can start to refine that area. So what does that neighborhood development area look like? And so, again, part of this process will be to look at that as well.
Great. So is the board still on board with this, proceeding with this? We've talked about this before, as far as our board goes.
Jeannie, yeah, I'm in favor of the study or putting the.
Yeah, bring the application.
Yes.
Yep, Ted, okay, just kind of journal consensus here. It's okay.
Whatever I miss.
A little busy. Your daughter got married. Okay.
Hey, Terry, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Noah, go for it.
Jason, I was just wondering, is there, other than maybe not having as much say in the, in the character of the area, is there anything else that would be a negative for going into these neighborhood areas?
I, I don't think so. You know, if, if, if there's a negative, some people might think some of the requirements are negative. So we're gonna need to get into the details a little bit more, but they want to get a designation. You need to have certain things in your zoning. And so, complete streets is the term they use, but basically pedestrian, biking accommodations, things of this nature. And, you know, there may be some people who think some of those requirements in zoning wouldn't be okay. And so I think that's the only negative I can think of. I don't think there's any other negatives that I'm aware of.
Great, thank you.
I know, I am trying to get that on your agendas, you know, yours and the trustees' agendas, to have that housing study.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm looking forward to that.
Anything you can do to help that get on, help get that on agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, for sure, I'll mention it to Brendan.
Jason, do you have anything else?
Not really, unless there's other questions in the room.
Any other questions? Eric Alden, you got a question?
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay.
Eric Alden, Chelside Road, thanks. Noah sort of asked my question, so that, thank you, Noah. But just before that, with the housing study, is it possible to see that study before the meeting so we can prepare questions on that? Thank you.
Maybe. It's a work in progress. So there's two studies, really. There's a regional housing suitability study that we've done. And just over the weekend, for some reason, our online version of it is not accessible at the moment. It will be soon. That is available once that's fixed, so we can get that to, to you, Eric, or anybody else who wants to see it. There's another more local Ludlow housing study that we're working on. At the moment, that's not out there, we're in fact still working on it. But there's two components to that. One is data, basically just documenting the problem that I think we all know exists. And then arguably, the more important part is what can we do about it? And so we haven't done that yet. So once we start to figure out, we're gonna lay out tools that are available, and then ultimately, we want to talk with you all about what tools make the most sense in Ludlow. So the first piece is available when it's fixed. We'll get the link out to folks. The second part, not quite available yet, but as soon as it is, we'll, we'll try to get components of it that are available out to everybody.
Sounds good. Jason, I have a question before you go. What should be, I know we're gonna, hopefully, we'll be working on this, the neighborhood development areas. But what should our goal be next? Because I took a look at the town plan online and the town zoning online. They're both like around two thousand fifteen, sixteen. I mean, there's later dates on there, but the only retained, pertained to the COVID things we stuck in in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So what should be our next direction? Because in light of the fact that we may consolidate in two years, and now that I'm seeing a lot of town zoning is the same as village zoning, but the village zoning has been updated and the town zoning hasn't, I guess I'd like a sense of direction. I talked to Brendan about this yesterday, and he said that he wants to talk to the select board about it, too. But what's like, when does our date line, what is our date for the next town plan when that is due?
I think that was, this is from memory, I think that was two thousand nineteen, and that's.
And that wasn't just the COVID stuff that we added?
I think that was before COVID, so the town plan, I think, is good through two thousand twenty-seven.
Okay, that's good.
Which will be here before we know it.
Because we're working on it before the deadline.
Yep. So, you know, my, my thought is, you know, I mean, there's a number of things you could do. I mean, I guess what are the pressing, you know, issues in town here? You could always do sort of a supplemental type study if you need more information on flood resilience or whatever. But you could do some updates to the town zoning, potentially. In a couple of years, you might want to look at that town plan again. And, you know, maybe the commission wants to, you know, focus a little bit more on housing. So like the Cavendish Planning Commission, for example, is looking into that. And, you know, that could be, that could be another area where we, you know, we, maybe we look at these housing studies and we help, or you can take them from there, or we can help you to really try to understand where housing could happen in Ludlow and see what we could do to make it happen.
Which hopefully we'll get from your housing study night with all three boards. Okay, I think that's about all the other questions I had. Do you have so many questions for Jason? Anybody? Okay, thanks so much, Jason. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
We got the big cheese there from you, John. We're very lucky. Well, you're lucky. I know, it's true. Next month's agenda planning, town zoning, sounds like that's what we're gonna be working on, and neighborhood development areas, hopefully after the select board and trustees meet. And we're gonna take a review of our eligibility next month. And see if we need to change anything to be eligible. All right, and other business? Any board member comments? Okay, any citizen comments? Scott, I just want to say I really appreciate you coming to these meetings. You've been to a lot of them, I appreciate that. Do you have any comments about, you know, neighborhood development areas or the housing study? Or is that a meeting you would be okay coming to?
Uh, sure, I would listen.
Yeah, okay. Do you have any comments, or it's nice to have you here.
Um, yes, I would be very interested in housing study. Since also we're acting to, 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 Ludlow, that would be very interesting. And are residents having options where they have those, certain rural houses that they want to live in? Um, we're getting two, a lot of the, it's, you know, lots of companies, there's, I have, so.
Okay, that's interesting. Yeah, it sounds like this neighborhood development area thing might tie right into that and the housing study. How about Mr. Alden?
I'm always happy to talk about housing. It's no surprise that that's, you know, the biggest topic in most neighborhoods, most towns. So, you know, as Jason said, that, that would be really a great goal, even if it's the only goal of this board over the next year or so, is to really work on housing, how we can get housing, how we can get workforce housing, affordable housing. And, you know, the biggest key to affordable housing is density. Without density, you won't have affordable housing. So just kind of to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to remind you, too, that those new state regs that we're gonna be, the, the trustees are going to be having a public hearing on, includes forty percent more development if you're building affordable housing, and another floor, as long as it's okay with the fire marshal. So those are two things, hopefully, that will be approved next month by the trustees.
Hey, Terry, I have something to.
Noah, go for it.
Yeah, so I think looking into the future stuff, housing is a big one. And also, it could be worth chatting with, you know, the D R B and some other things. I feel like we spend a lot of time on, you know, limiting development and certain things, which, which can be, can be good to, to make sure we have a hand on everything. But also the things that we do want to encourage sometimes get lumped in there. It's, it's pretty difficult to, for people to do these kind of things that we're looking for. So, you know, I know with the flood, there's a lot of things, but D R B stuff just was such a slum for, for the people. Especially there's damages that, you know, they're really just bringing things back that now they're raised to, to kind of craft it. So they don't need to go through the D R B, or there's ways to move that along further. You know, I think with the housing stuff, and, you know, there are, there are certain areas where, hey, we really want to evolve this, there aren't any ways to, to build that into, into the stuff that we're working out now.
Okay, duly noted. I did want to mention that Logan got me in touch with these new people from FEMA, Kelly and Kyle, and asked me if I would meet with her. And we had that meeting yesterday, I C C Brendan on it, and he, you know, said, I'd like, I'm not part of that flood resiliency committee. And so I, you know, I didn't want to step on any toes going to this meeting, but we did chat with them. And I know Brendan shared his frustration with receiving absolutely no money so far, like three to four million dollars in debt, and he's got no money from FEMA at all because of all the different people that have been in charge of getting that going at Regional. But they keep switching over, they've had eight different people, and every time they get a new person, they have to redo all the paperwork, they require different other things, and it's just stalling. You know, get for us getting any of that money that we put into cleaning up from the flood. So, you know, we did talk about, they're gonna do a whole, what we decided, what they decided at this meeting is they're gonna do a whole scoping of the river and try to look for places that, where water could accumulate, maybe letting the river meander like it used to back in the day. I know we're dealing with a whole lot more water now than we ever did before. But the river did meander over where Shaz is and the Okemo Marketplace and Benson's Chervil Way. And, and now it can't meander anymore, obviously, because we've developed everything right up to the river. So anyway, those are some of the things we talked about yesterday. Okay, I will take them. Any other, yes, go for it.
I have a question. So what you're talking about, is that a river project?
Um, no, that's different. I guess the river project is replacing a covert on Commonwealth Avenue. That's more structural things.
I think that, so the river project is about buyouts, floodway restoration, uh, different other means of, of townings.
Okay.
Um, but I know they were looking at the blockywood buyouts, like the mill, and also, also the last, um, doing floodway restoration down in the area. I assume you do some kind of study with the renovations and what it's going to say the impact it will have. I think it'll have more of an impact on Cavendish or Ludlow.
Well, yeah, I guess that's the, that's the thing about redoing the whole sewer plan. It will have more effect on Cavendish than Ludlow. And also, the Timmering buyout will save Cavendish, but not Ludlow, the village Ludlow.
And then Ludlow is also pushing, in, in their project. And hopefully, floodway restoration, safer to, more impact to Ludlow.
Definitely.
And then the river being here, Ludlow is a major public, um, that's some talk about it. They're being fair enough, although one of three. So, you know, part of the corner, one hundred and one of three, leaving town. Or maybe the state could elevate, or maybe we can have our, to allow some floodway restoration there to relieve stress on the, the sound.
Well, I talked about, I wish that, you know, we could have a flood control dam between Slavet and Ludlow. Because it seems that's where we're getting most of our water from, but Brendan doesn't really want to hear about flood control dams right now. She's dealing with aging ones that are very expensive to fix, but need to be fixed.
I feel, um, so I'm concerned about, not really density, but the new amount of services we will have with a change of flood size and the more coverage. Because right now, our drainage, our stormwater drainage systems, they come about that, for example, gets, or is elevated in all region, all the water coming down, and so forth. And so I'd like to see as a town, have stormwater management plans every time we get more developments that we're assessing what these structures will be able to operate. You know, as well as having this to be the same structure that we operate.
Yeah, I guess that, that covert's not gonna be the complete fix, huh? Up on Commonwealth. Eric Alden, you have a comment?
Just so that, so a lot of players get to write the documents. You can go with some of the, the.
Okay, so there it is, obviously. Okay.
I just have one thing unrelated to housing. And maybe it's not within our realm, but I would like to see the sidewalks addressed. The, I don't know what side it'd be, um, right-hand side after going through the stoplight, just specifically in front of Dunkin Donuts, where there's no sidewalk at all. And even a little before that, there's, you know, there's not a designated sidewalk. And I feel like that's a really dangerous area. And I, I can't believe that in the permitting for Dunkin Donuts that there, there wasn't a sidewalk there. I believe that the sign was put where the sidewalk was placed. So it may be a signage issue, but it impacts the sidewalk. So I know people have brought it up, and I'm not sure what board or where that falls somewhere.
I know that when we did our survey, before we even started our village zoning update, that was something people wanted, they wanted the sidewalks. They were to snow, they wanted more sidewalks. more sidewalks. And that sounds like an area where it's definitely needed. Okay, we got some direction here. All right, is there any other business? I'll adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.